Well, in our first order of business will be to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America into the republic which has made us one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like everybody to our May council meeting. We have two items on the agenda, so we can get started right away here. I will be consent agenda, which includes several items. We have our April fifteenth, twenty twenty five regular council meeting minutes or May sixth, twenty twenty five special council meeting minutes. A request to approve the updated emergency operations plan, a request to approve the evergreen place diswasher disconnect quote. Which is an update, a request to approve the amendment to the farming lease with Mr. McNair. Or request to approve the graduation parade route on Main Street and a request to approve Zachary Clapp as the public works maintenance technician hire. A request approved Seaview employees list, a resolution twenty five dash twenty two, which is accepting donations, thank you to the two donations ever given to the city. Their request for the road closure for the early learning center banning from E V A.
Um, the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Motion second, any discussion?
Mister Mayor, I have one addition. Um, in the emergency operations plan, I would like that to be included with council member Fulton Freddie's information. So that was left out of there, so I'd like to put that on the list.
Well, put your one of your big white letter. So we have amendment to the operation plan include council member rights information.
Under them.
What were they?
Yes.
Now, second, motion a second, and then pertaining to the prayer up for graduation city or the schools responsible for closing the road and stuff like that.
Yep, I talked to our principal, um, Mitch Schultz multiple times and just like when your staff, public works will place the barricades during the workday, but just we don't incur overtime costs and sit uh school staff will place the barricades and remove.
And congratulation, congratulations to that. Uh, his interview with higher. Uh, so any other discussion or question names, Delaina?
Hi.
Colton?
Hi.
Vernon?
I.
Brandy?
Hi.
And David is, uh, we'll move on to public input, no one here for public input, any written correspondence?
No written correspondence from the man.
All right, council, here we do these. So I'll read them again, we have two proaction, we did a free, we're gonna push one back here uh a little bit. Uh, so I'll read these off. We'll do the age friendly first, whereas the city of Pine Island is designated an age friendly community with efforts to promote a welcoming and inclusive community for all ages. And whereas the age friendly committee has continued to work tirelessly with Pine Island Public Services, Pine Island Senior Center, dementia friends, and many other age friendly groups. To promote the welcoming of our older adults and whereas the city of Pine Island supports the efforts of the age friendly committee. To ensure our seniors and older adults have the opportunity to keep Pine Island their forever home and city. Whereas I may or may not please help our community members to acknowledge the important role that our older adults play in the enrichment of our community. And whereas the age friendly volunteers are recognized for their many hours of work. Educational programs, classes, and opportunities to provide to our community members. To enhance their knowledge and understanding of the meaning of every age friendly community and whereas we publicly thank those older adults. Who continue to contribute and participate in our community. And whereas mayor Dave freeze will publicly thank the Pine Island Hope Schools and the Vanham Public Library. For their efforts in promoting age friendly opportunities. Now therefore, I may or may not please do proclaim this follows may will be declared as the older adults month in Pine Island in collaboration with the administration for community living. It is a time to recognize older Americans contributions, highlighting aging trends, and reaffirm commitments to serving the older adults in the Pine Island community respectfully, David Freeze. And just hopefully think many of those would have helped with the age friendly initiative and it's a work in progress. And much appreciate their work. And lastly, whereas the city of Pine Island supports the efforts of our local American legion and military workers to promote a supportive community to our military veterans and families. And whereas the Friday before Memorial Day is declared Poppy Day. And whereas the public is encouraged to wear a poppy to honor the fallen and support the living who have worn our nation's uniform. And whereas the red poppy is a nationally recognized symbol of sacrifice worn by Americans since World War One. To honor those who served and died for our country and all of us. To remind Americans of the sacrifice made by our veterans while protecting our precious freedoms. And whereas be remembered with respect that the poppy flourished in Europe because of the World War Left Pride of War. And whereas the Pine Island American Legion Auxiliary needs our local community each year to distribute poppy, poppies for the public to wear. And whereas on behalf of the city and the office of mayor, we publicly thank our veterans, both past and present for their sacrifice in fighting our nation's wars. And whereas city facilities will be lit red during the month of May, the red poppy is a symbol of the remembrance for National Poppy Days. Now therefore, I may or may not please do hereby proclaim May to be recognized as Poppy Month in the city of Pine Island. In support of our American legion family, it is a time to reflect, thank and support those in our nation's military and give firm our commitment to show support to those who protect the United States of America respectfully, David Free Mayor. And again, hopefully thank our legion family for their tremendous work that they do to support our military veterans, past and present. And to remember those who have gone for us. Uh, with that being said, I'd like to invite the community to come out on Memorial Day and help support our military families and remember those at these communities uh program, which will be at ten forty five of the bridge and then we'll run down to the cemetery. So. All right, we'll move on to administration. Which is to uh, I had a wish of a request to accept the twenty twenty four annual financial report. Everybody that needs to look at that.
So typically our auditors will do a presentation, this year they are, they recorded a short video that we've been taking video and this is where they go through the audit and explain the different funds. Explaining um their findings, um, we didn't have any compliance findings this year. Um, we always have one finding, um, just an internal finding of because our auditors prepare financial statements, which is pretty um common in small cities who don't have a good hit of fine stuff. But other than that, there's a clean audit, so. Um, Tyler C, who is one of our head auditors, will be speaking in just a moment.
Right, my name is Tyler Dean, I'm the audit manager at Abdo, and I'm gonna be making a video present to the twenty twenty four financial statement audit. Um, the audit presentation is meant to be essentially a high level overview of the audit, so basically try to get to many points of the audit. Uh, that we feel like you should be aware of, something too lost in the detail. Oh, um, we're going to go over today's our responsibility as auditors as well as our audit opinion. I'll then go into the results of your various funds, starting with your general fund. And moving on to your other governmental funds as well as the enterprise funds, and then we'll, we'll end it with what we like to call key performance indicators. So our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion on the city's financial statements. We are issuing what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean audit opinion, so the opinion would be striving for in a financial statement on. Uh, we also do some testing around Minnesota legal compliance, also testing around state statute. That's all been to the city, and we also have no compliance issues to note for this year, so overall clean audit opinion, no compliance issues. We do however have one internal control finding only issue. And this is a recurring finding to one we would have seen before, if you've uh heard one of these audit presentations. Uh, this is a preparation of financial statement internal control finding. Basically, what this means is that we as your auditor not only uh perform the audit, but we also draft the financial statements. Technically, this is the internal control finding, so uh recurring finding for the city in prime most finding we issue uh doing these financial payment audits. We're kind of moving into the financial results here. Uh, the first graph here, what we're showing is your general funds, fund balance in comparison to your general fund fund balance policy. The city's fund balance policy is to maintain a fund of thirty five percent of your following years um your following years budget expenditures. So what this graph is showing is that as of year end point twenty four, your general fund balances add about thirty three percent of your following years budget. So something to keep an eye on is just that the city is, you know, slightly below that fund balance quality at year end point twenty four. Um, next graph here, we're looking at your budget to actual results for the general fund for twenty twenty four. The left here is your final budget, the middle of the actual results, in the right here is the variance of that final budget. Looking at your top line of revenue, your revenue did come over, come in about three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars over your final budget, so positive budget variance there. Um, couple factors, and this is small city assistance aid, which was received and not budgeted in the past year, as well as your interest on investments is higher than your budget. Uh, your expenditures had a negative budget variance, meaning you spent about three hundred thousand dollars over that final budget. This is really more to do cap, more to uh more capital outlay expenses as well as economic development costs um than in that final budget. Other thing I'm gonna point out here is that the general fund did transfer out of over a million dollars to other funds. Um, general fund transferred out money to the debt service funds and capital funds as well as the water and sewer funds, so a significant amount of transfers out. But all in all, the general fund did increase by about eighty thousand of this one point five million dollar amount of your year end general fund uh fund balance. But here we're looking at your growth in revenues by type over the last three years, uh your main sources revenue being uh your tax levy intergovernmental revenue, which is like grant revenue, so the small city assistance aid receiving passengers, kind of a big reason for that increase. For different services than other revenue sources, stuff like uh interest on investments and transfers into the fund and stuff like that. So overall, not a lot to comment on here, the property tax levy, of course, is your main revenue source in the general fund. Now here we're looking at your general fund expenditures by type over the last three years, so same format of the graph, we're just looking at expenses now. Both general government, public fifty, public work, kind of in your three main departments. Uh, overall, these costs have remained, you know, pretty consistent, you have seen the general government and public fifty increase in opening year. Um, the other uh expenses, you know, the big increase for the, from the past year is the, is the transfer out that I mentioned, where you are transferring out about over a million dollars to other funds in this current year in the general fund. So that's kind of a big reason for that big increase for other where. Now looking at some of your other funds, starting out with your special revenue funds. What we're showing is just your fund balance at twenty twenty four year end compared to last year's year end and how that increased or decreased. Not a lot to comment on, but the bunch of revenue funds, just overall in total, uh between all your funds, your fund balance increased about fifty seven thousand dollars. Been saying parts of the graph here, but now we're looking at your capital project funds. Again, you know, change from twenty four and twenty three by that comparison. The big thing here is your capital equipment fund, uh you did have that Elthron land sale in twenty twenty four, which, you know, that was, I believe, like one point five million dollars. So that's really the primary reason for the large increase uh overall in the capital project fund balances. Um, now looking at debt service fund. Um, so if you're, you know, this just shows your book cash and assets and your debt service fund, as well as your year end liability for all the various um itunes as you have for governmental debt service fund. Um, and then the bottom graph here, this just shows your for ten years, your debt service obligation for open out between principal and interest. Moving into your enterprise funds here now. The top half of these graphs just show kind of your operating, the, you know, your operating revenue as well as your uh operating expenses and debt payments. And in this bottom half to show your cash balance by um, your cash balance by each fund. And then the line here, what we like to call a minimum target balance, um, that target balance is um half of the following years um operating costs, or I'm sorry, half of your operating cost plus the following year's debt service obligation. So that's kind of what this line is, and this really just shows that the waterfront cash will stay pretty consistent year over year, and you are meeting and exceeding that target balance. Now sewer fund, kind of the same story here, you're throwing the operating activities up top. And then your, your cash balances over the year and that target balance than that before, so again, kind of like the waterfront, your sewer fund cash balance also stayed pretty consistent year over year. Uh, but more enterprise funds, I'll, I'm briefly, you know, that Evergreen fund, which I know that the city's been working on selling that Evergreen property. Again, just trying to get operating activity year over year, the debt has been paid off and the Evergreen fund, there are not been debt payments anymore, and then just the cash balance um year over year, so that cash balance was kind of below that target balance, now you're back above it after the past year. Cemetery funds, again, operating activity up top, cash balance below. Overall, the fund remained pretty consistent over the years and has always been above that target balance. Um, something I noticed here, the deputy registrar fund, that cash balance has kind of decreased. You know, significantly over the past couple of years, so, you know, the, the deputy registrar fund, which we have a, a minimum target balance, two months of operating cost. You know, you only have about a thousand dollars to right now currently in the fund, so maybe something to keep an eye on there is the cash balance in this fund. Um, now we're looking at your cash and investment balances by type, uh by fund type, this is for the whole city together. So you ended twenty twenty four with about eleven million dollars um in the bank. And really main reason for that large increase from last year, you know, some of the fund performance for, in, for some cases, but the biggest thing, of course, would be that Elthron land sale this past year being the biggest reason for that increase in cash balance. Um, so now we're looking at key performance indicators, so what we look at here is uh the black line is the city of Pine Island. And what we're looking at is um class four cities as, as peer groups, is class four cities. Which the cities all across the state of Minnesota with population of ten thousand or less. And then we're also looking at cities in Goodview County as well as cities in Old County. Um, as a comparison. And one other thing to note for these peer groups, we only actually have data up until twenty twenty two, so we kind of have to look back a little bit to compare you of your current, you know, twenty three, twenty four data, kind of have to look back twenty twenty two, the most recent peer group data. So tax rate and tax per capita have kind of been a similar story where you're a little bit over your peer group averages for both tax rate and taxes per capita. Um, I'm just kind of a, a look there. Uh, long term debt per capita, kind of a similar story as tax rate and tax per capita. Overall, um, you know, over the course of about five years, a little bit above your peer group averages, you know, again, we don't have future data, but looking at the trend, you're likely still a little bit above uh the peer group averages. Uh, this, this graph here is debt service expenditures as a percent of current expenditure, so just kind of tell me if your current expenses are spent on debt service. Uh, one thing I'll note back in twenty twenty two, large uptick there because you did refund from debt, you had a lot of debt pop that year. Uh, last graph here, just showing your current expenses per capita and your capital expenses per capita, again, based on those peer group averages. Oh, current overall like operating expenses per capita, pretty, pretty consistent with the cities in Goodview County and class four cities, and then a little bit above the Old County peer group average. And then your capital expenses per capita, you've actually pretty consistently been, you know, either at or below the peer group averages. Capital expenses per capita, we typically do see volatility there because that typically depends on when you're like big projects, big places, big purchases. And that is my last slide, so uh feel free to reach out to me if you have any uh questions about the audit in general, and I can get back to you. Uh, thank you and have a good meeting.
So I know Tyler's not here to answer any questions.
My name is Tyler Dean, I'm the audit manager at Abdo.
Uh, but if council has any questions about the audit, um, we'll just reiterate two, two main points, um, again, our expenditures and our um revenues look larger than our normal because of that uh one point five million dollar land sale um for the Elthron, the excess right of way. Essentially, we took it into the general fund, so it counted as a revenue source, and then when we transferred out into the capital fund, that comes as an expenditure. So even though we're just transferring between funds, it counts against the general fund. Um, and then the other item was the deputy registrar fund, so that's typically been healthy. Uh, we purchased a building uh two forty six next door uh in twenty twenty one, I believe now, so the fund went down. Um, we've still even building that, and then last year with being able to do driver's license, so we had to purchase all the equipment up, upfront. So that's why that uh fund looks so low, we will get reimbursed in twenty twenty five for that establishment, and so I expect that fund to bounce back up. It's just that it's at the end of twenty twenty four, so we didn't get a chance to get reimbursed in that calendar and fiscal year, so. Is there any other questions that you would like me to answer for you?
Thanks for pointing.
Yes, because yeah, when you go, when you go through the um, through the audit and you see numbers like that, it makes you wonder, so that's why I wanted to point it out, otherwise uh the majority of our funds do um look healthy as usual, so.
This will be an action pair to console for accepting the audit.
I'll make a more specific decision. I'll second.
Motion a second to accept the audit, presented any other discussion or questions? Of course, anything comes up that you want to discuss, it can always come to city hall as well to do this, so. Uh, Delaina?
Hi.
Colton?
Hi.
Vernon?
Hi.
Brandy?
Hi.
David?
I.
Thank you, Seth, I hope to get that done. Uh, I had a wish is gonna be a request for the chamber of commerce to be a assembly permit for this thing going from here.
Yep, so in your packet you have a assembly permit from the Chamber of Commerce, they're hoping to host a car show on July twenty seventh. Um, the assembly permits um just covers the event that the crowd exceeds, um, what we have written on our ordinance for assemblies. Um, they are requesting as a nonprofit to have the fee waived for the assembly permit. Um, on top of that, they're also requesting for um permission to serve alcohol on public property, uh, I believe south by southeast. Who's gonna attend the event um as a chamber and E D A member, um, they also were requesting exemption from mobile food unit permit requirements, um, and our mobile food ordinance, it states there is a permit exemption um for special events or community festivals as permitted by the council. Um, they're requesting that this be considered a one-time city event or special festival. That they could have mobile food units appear without needing to go through and getting a mobile food unit for this. So there's a lot of requests, kind of all wrapped up in one, so there's the assembly permit, the fee waiver, the alcohol request, and the requirement for a mobile food unit.
Steven, can you elaborate, where was that, will you help that?
Um, so it is on Main Street, um, it's between the blocks of Second Street and Third Street.
Okay.
Um, they have submitted
Yeah.
the permit to Goodview County, um, and it's been approved for a B two to be set up around that, and I believe it is, uh, I don't have the hour in the phone, I believe it's re operated.
Correct, yeah. We like a little bit. I'm just curious, why they decided to go Lee Street instead of like Park or something, you know?
Yeah, I think as, as the chamber, they wanted to bring
Yeah.
that back, back in downtown, now that they're trespassing other things with migraines.
Yeah, as part of conversation between the chamber and E D A talking, because it's, it did get some kind of, but some kind of like, right.
They're starting out with just one this year, um, in hopes that it goes well and in the future to, to add it to downtown.
I'll look at the Chamber of Commerce E D A.
Second, motion a second to approve these permit requests, including those exemptions. Any other discussion? With Delaina?
Hi.
Colton?
Hi.
Vernon's?
Hi.
Brandy?
Hi.
David?
I.
You guys see the card for that? Uh, I have a C, which is a request to approve the Evergreen Place purchase agreement, if you had a little bit of fun with this in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Freeze and Council, so if you remember in February, the city council uh approved a letter of intent to sell Evergreen Place alongside that, uh, the same uh potential buyers were pursuing a letter of intent and purchase agreement for Pine Haven through um that foreclosure process. And so now we have before you a purchase agreement, uh, we've gone back and forth with um our city attorney votes and then the buyer's attorneys as well. Uh, we have just gotten this agreement back today. Um, we're making a push to try to get it before you today, so we didn't have to have another special council meeting. Uh, so we are asking to approve the purchase agreement um with any changes that attorney votes feels are appropriate. So the purchase price is blank on the second page. But the purchase price in the letter of intent was for eight hundred and ninety three thousand and six hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents.
Just on that point, Mayor, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, uh, just on that point, on the purchase price point, um, uh, I think Elizabeth and I in the city should have some degree of assurance that that price isn't going to change, the only reason it would be left blank in the document right now is the buyer, uh, Eden Care, or whatever the name of the entity is exactly, uh, is waiting for title work on the city's property. Uh, we believe and have good reason to believe that they're gonna find that the title work on that property is clean, or is, is there are not encumbrances. Uh, mortgages, whatever, against the property, um, so we have every reason to believe that the purchase price wouldn't need to change. Uh, and I will say, uh, as Elizabeth said, we got this red line uh an hour ago, or a little bit over an hour ago. Uh, I didn't realize that until thirty minutes ago, um, but I've been sitting here going through it as your meeting has been progressing. And um the, the long and short of the changes um are this. Uh, I think you should approve, if you want to approve the sale of the property, and I think you do. If you want to do that, I think you should approve it, subject to my review and revisions, but I will tell you, I don't think I will have many or any revisions, the revisions that have been made in the red line document that we've gotten are to address the complication of the ownership of the Pine Haven um, uh, care facility, not the Evergreen facility. Uh, of course, I don't need to go through the whole long backstory in that, but the state um has taken over that facility through a receivership, and then since then, a federal loan, a USDA loan has been foreclosed, being foreclosed. And so that's quite complicated uh from a lawyer perspective, from a legal perspective. And really the changes that are being made here are all related to that, they're not really related to the city's ownership of Evergreen or our intention to convey Evergreen to the buyer. It's all just to reflect the complications on the other side of the deal, so. You know, and I may, I, I made some comments, I made some revisions to the original purchase agreement, uh, they were very minor, frankly, revisions. I believe they've all been incorporated here, but I just want to line up my red lines to their red lines to make sure that we're on the same page about what I wanted to change. And then the additional changes, again, to address the state, the M D, the Minnesota Department of Health's unique role here, I don't, appear to me to be problematic, so. Um, I, I guess I have every reason to believe that the document is very, very close to, if not final. Uh, other than we need to add in the purchase price once the buyer is convinced that our title to what we're selling is clean.
Okay, well, the Evergreen thing, so to figure out with whatever Bob needs necessarily needs to be changed.
Oh, second. Motion in a second to approve this contingent with Bob's review of the documentation and the. Specifics that he needs to look at it about. And then thank you, Bob. Um. No, this has been a long time coming, so I'm ready to get this all rolling. Let's have some next up. Uh, any questions from council?
The, the price in the letter of intent was eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. That's about all further thing.
Then your contingency, we have a minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So that was over that. Um, and then closing date is not for sure yet. But they are hoping for a June thirtieth closing date.
And David says, hi. Thanks for your help on that, Bob.
Super, thank you.
We're going to move on to item D, which is requested through the sidewalk maintenance program. This is a pretty exciting update.
So last month, uh. Todd, Robert, Sid, and I, Matt, and I are representing them from Safe Step and essentially they're, uh. Sidewalk maintenance company. And what we can do is we can contract with them and we can really create the program however we want. Uh, multiple cities surrounding us use them. They're kind of a company in one in itself. They don't have a lot of competition. And so it's, it's hard to find that company to compare them to. Essentially what they do is they, um. Precision cut sidewalk, uh, to make sure it's graded. And so if there were any cracks in the sidewalk or it had shifted, they would cut that down, um, down to a quarter inch. So that everything would be ADA compliant and handicap accessible. Uh, eventually I would like to roll this program into, um, not only a. Uh, program where we're just grinding things out, but if. Sidewalk patches in front of people's houses need to be replaced, um, that we can work towards some, some sort of program where. Um, we have the resident participate, but the city participates as well. Currently in our ordinances, we put. One hundred percent of sidewalk replacements and repair on the homeowner. And realistically, if we want people to, if we want safe sidewalks for people to use. I think we need to, uh, help out our residents and make it more affordable to have usable and safe sidewalks. I think this is the first step to that program. And so what we can do is we can give them a dollar amount. And they'll just go out and do as much of the, the cutting as they can within that. Uh, after talking, Todd and I thought that just doing here Main Street between, um, Second and Third Streets. Saying, I'm, I'm guessing that they can probably spend that whole budget just on both sides of the street on that one block. But we thought that would be a good, um, kind of trial run this summer to see how that goes. In the future, what they can do is they can actually go out and assess the entire city. Or we can give them a portion of the city and they'll go out and they'll actually mark every single place. That needs to be cut in the future, or if a slab needs to be replaced, and then we can work with a contractor on replacing that sidewalk. This is a very big picture program. Uh, we, we would have to iron out the details. But I think for this summer, I think it would be a good use of funds to just focus on, uh. Downtown Main Street. Uh, I walk to the bank frequently and I've tripped multiple times myself. And, um, so I, I want to make sure that, you know, a lot of people visit downtown. So that we can try, see what the company's about, um, start working with their D I S S, so to start marketing things. And to get on the schedule too, because they're pretty busy. So they hop around city to city. Typically, we have a ten thousand dollar sidewalk budget each year. But the past few years, that's gone on putting in new sidewalks. Like at the park last year, we put a new sidewalk along, around the pickleball court. So I would be asking a budget of up to ten thousand dollars. So then. If we need to replace a sidewalk elsewhere, we can pull out some of those funds for that replacement. But. Uh, I would imagine we can use most of those funds for the Safe Step program.
My understanding is they do cutting only? They don't do like muckjacking them or anything, right?
Correct. They do cutting only. Uh, but then what they would do. Is when they assess them, if there's a sidewalk that isn't a good candidate for cutting. That's when they would flag it in the G I S, and that's when the city then, um, they have contractors that they've worked with as well. Or the city could choose their own contractor. Uh. It sounded like they can pretty much top anything to grade. Um. The school use this company, Fear Musical. So if you walk around the school, all of their sidewalks are. Uh, you can see where they actually cut and then they're pretty smooth surfaces. I, I went and took a look after reading out with them just to see what it looked like and. It looked like they had done a good job. Uh, they've been partnering with Umbroda for the past three or four years. And so if you walk downtown Umbroda, you can kind of see what they curb cut, but you can barely, you can barely tell. Like I said, it's down to a quarter of an inch of, um, any font, so.
Yeah, I, what I, when I was reading this two nights ago, it was this. Would partner well with when we did our sidewalk by our rock on it. Um, Rachel and I are up there for that. Well, that was a warm one. And but this falls right in mind what we've been having a community with the H R leadership and. Um, having sidewalks that are acceptable. So this, this fits right in with other things that we do, so.
Yeah, I know, side of up, technically on our neighbors, you know, we ran our side, but. That's great on Main Street. Nothing I can do about it on their side.
No, I think it would be a good program. To be started, like they're just, they're, Elizabeth said, this is, we're going to do a challenge, summer hopefully. See how it goes and.
I'm looking there a question for the side of the new program.
Second, maybe motion in a second to approve the program.
Is that up to the ten thousand?
Any other discussion from council questions? Delena. We are looking at some demo, a request to approve quote from B M B Beer Stairwell demolition. Kind of take care of this before it takes care of us.
Yes, uh, this is a hard request because you just sat through the audit and the license real funds, uh, have been used elsewhere the past few years. However, I do believe that it is becoming a safety hazard. And so. The back stairs that service both the upstairs apartment and then the lower level, they're, they're just rotting out. And, uh, it's not safe for employees to go in and out anymore. I did obtain a quote from Gacu Builders for three thousand eight hundred dollars. And that is for the demolition of the stairs, both upstairs and down. And then, um, he would install just temporary safe steps, just nothing fancy. And then down the road, once we have some funds accumulated in the license real fund, we can look at doing a more permanent structure. Uh, currently the upstairs is not being used at all. You can still access it from the front. So I'm not concerned about there not being a secondary access, since we have no plans to use that in the near future. I'm looking there a question for the.
Also, motion in a second. Any other questions from council? Wraps up the administration portion, we're going to jump into planning mission. May thirteen twenty twenty-five planning is one of the meetings.
Yep, so, uh, we're up to summer, just to kind of keep you guys in loop. There's no action in, uh, before you tonight. But the planning and zoning commission did meet earlier in May, um, held a public hearing in regards to a registration for beekeeping. Um, per city code section ten point oh six, beekeeping registration applications can be approved administratively. Um, as long as the applicant meets all of the requirements in the code. A certain period of time passes and it's automatically, um, approved if there are no objections. Um, it doesn't need to go before. Council or the planning zoning commission unless an objection is filed. Um, in this case, there was. We send out a notice to all properties within two hundred feet. But when someone applies for the keeping permits, um, we did receive one. Um, letter of concern from a resident, um, citing safety concerns related to their allergies. Uh, obviously we are concerned. Uh, so the planning and zoning commission held a public hearing to discuss that and address that with the applicant and. The person found on the objection, um, following their hearing and discussion, the application was approved. Um, so there is an active beekeeping permit, um, at four oh five First Avenue Southeast. The applicant has many years of experience with beekeeping. Um, he can add up to two. I, so he's only having one, um, so he's kind of trying to minimize those risks. Um, everything was in line, um, with our ordinance. In the event that there wasn't an objection, it would have been approved anyways, um. So again, just wanted to loop you guys in, so you are aware if you receive any questions, um, regarding these in the area, um. The registration does have to be renewed annually, um, upon that is due, that objection period within a game. So. If for the first year it goes poorly and people want to speak out, they will have an opportunity.
All right, we'll jump into public works and engineering, which is a request to approve seal coating quote. There's a map.
Mayor Council, uh, yeah, I got two quotes, one from. Broner, Asspool, and Pearson Brothers. Uh, I am recommending going with Pearson Brothers. They're like eight thousand dollars less. And I've used them before, so comfortable with them, but. Yeah, they came in at thirty thousand, fifty-one dollars and six.
Was this all that we overlaid? Is there a report?
No, this is projects at. Street, Second Street. It's five years old. No, and then down by the primary. And, and this won't happen until after cheese stuff, so. They were, I mean, they're hoping at prices, so.
I'll second, motion in a second. And this, this goes back several years, when we talked about putting these, um, street projects. Rather than putting off the maintenance, we wanted to invest in, in about top of this, uh, this.
This is start, so just like the other mill and overlays for getting them started, so. I'm just, that's why we just kind of. It's actually down down the bottom. So it was so neat, uh, if it was a little shower, I wouldn't be so wet. It was. They were down sixteen feet right there, so. Right, yeah, it was, was pretty bad, so. They're good things. But like, keep watching it. I feel that it's passed it out bad.
Um, we're going to jump into conversation about swimming pool. And some repairs going on there.
Yeah, so in front of you, um, is a quote from Horizon Commercial Pool Supply, um, out of Garden Hills. Unfortunately, we have some maintenance issues down at the pool, um, a portion of the plaster bubbled, um, and. Broke off a few pieces of tile and one of the black tile lines, um, so that portion of plaster needs to be cut. And replaced as well as replacing of the tile. Um, we kind of ran around with a few local contractors, um, started to get people in in a week's notice. Um, so we reached out to Verizon, uh, last week, we got them, um. As a suggestion from U S Aquatics, they're the company that originally designed the pool, um, they, they surprised in the past. So they passed them along. We got them in here last week. The plan was to start tomorrow. With the rain, we'll see if that's possible. Um, so we did sign off on the quote just due to the short timeline. Um, but we wanted to get it in front of you for your final approval. Obviously, if you have issues with it, we can tell them not to come. But, um, in order to get that pool up and running, we're hoping to fill it prior to move Friday, but that's obviously not, so. We're trying to get it rolling and ready for, um, our letgoes to something to train a cool on time.
Both there. Any questions from council? Thank you, staff, for getting on that. Um, Delena. We have an update on.
Um, yeah, so in your, uh, packet of memo from Craig Britton, the engineer. Um, he's been working with U S Aquatics, again, a pool designer. Um, the original pool design did include a slide, um, at the time of the bond. Obviously didn't happen, so we're trying to catch up with that. Um, we've talked about it at some work sessions and agreed upon a fiberglass slide. We're waiting for an official quote, um, from U S Aquatics and their vendors. Um, but Craig has it in an estimated four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand range. Um, we kind of came in high in hopes that. That's not the actual number, but we will see. Uh, and then he also lays out a timeline, um, so we're trying to just kind of introducing it tonight. Um, hoping to have a resolution authorizing, um, bids to go out in June. Accepting the bids in July, um, and then ordering, depending on the lead time of the ordering of the slide. Um, with the installation either in the fall. Of twenty-five or early spring of twenty-six, um, so it will be installed for the twenty-six, we'll see some. So that is where things stand with the slide as.
Many, many years. Thank you for. Um, we're going to jump into claims. Bob, you have anything for us, the legal assisting?
You know, I, I just, I want to mention that, uh, as, uh, council members would be aware, the, uh, session has ended. But a special session will be. Uh, called, but, uh, what came out of the session, um, just at the end, that I just thought was noteworthy and just wanted to mention to you is that, um. You know, we, we operated, uh, remotely, of course, during COVID. Uh, and that option was attractive to cities, um, for a variety of reasons. And there's been a push to loosen up our open meeting law a little bit. Uh, to accommodate, uh, council members occasionally appearing remotely like I'm doing right now. Of course, I'm not a council member, but. Council members occasionally want to appear remotely at council meetings. And it looks like the governor, that the legislature has passed something that's going to do that, um, and looks like the governor will sign that. And so to the extent going forward, um, somebody has a conflict but wants to participate remotely. You know, reach out to Elizabeth who can reach out to me, although I bet Elizabeth's going to know all about it, um, uh, and we can likely accommodate. Uh, that a little bit more than we have been able to in the past. And beyond that, I have nothing else.
Motion in a second on claim. We're jumping to department updates, administrative.
You know, really, I'll kind of piggyback on attorney votes, so, um. With the legislative session ending, uh, if you. With the legislative session ending, uh, if you didn't know, uh, total budget was not passed. And so Governor Walz has said that you will call a special session when both parties have agreed upon new budgets. It is unclear yet whether they will at the same time have a bonding bill, and so. I've heard both ways that they will not consider a bonding bill as a special session, I've also heard that. That's a bargaining chip that some of the parties will only agree to a. Budget if that, that there is going to be a bonding bill. We haven't seen any drafts of bonding bills, so we are not sure if there is a draft of a bonding bill and if the San Diego district is a part of it. But we've been in constant communication with our lobbyists on that, and so we will play the waiting game to see if. A bond was even passed, and if it, when it's passed, inform, so. Uh, we're, it won't put us that far behind schedule if, if we don't get any dollars during this bonding bill or this legislative cycle. It'll only put us about six months behind schedule, uh, so we'll, we'll try again next session. We, as I said at our last meeting, um, we did put together a federal congressional directed spending. We just become earmarks, you know, probably congressional directed spending. We did put in a ten million dollar request, um, through that, and that has been, uh, supported by all of our federal legislators. Well, we'll wait to hear if we have any federal.
Excellent, thank you. Rachel?
I was hurting and getting my report, so I gave you all copies this evening. Um, just to highlight, we are doing some reading again this year, that's a big surprise. Uh, sign up, we'll begin the first week of June, that'll be June second, and they'll run through the summer. Our theme is, uh, leveling up at your libraries, we've got lots of different game programming going on, so. I look forward to seeing what all the kids come up with. Um, in conjunction with that, we also are gonna be starting to circulate games, so if you know anyone who needs to check out some games. Maybe you're looking to purchase something for your family or just wanting to get together and do some gaming. Come on by, we'll set you up. Uh, last night was our last evening for the spring for our Pollinator Gardens lecture series that we've been doing with the master gardeners. Um, we've had pretty good attendance, I was very happy with the people, um, who were able to make it. Um, and then we'll have one more program in the fall with Kim Olson, chief master gardener, who is actually installing our garden and does not, did all the design and everything. Um, and that'll be on the Keystone and Soft Landings, that's about the trees and then the vegetation underneath, so we look forward to having that. And also insulation, she said that her plants were shipped this week, so. Look for movement on that coming up here soon. Otherwise, my, um, main concern this month of the library has been all about the migration that happened with our catalog, so. We moved from one company to another completely different software system, think, uh, Epic with Mail. Um, only with a lot more chaotic training, I'm guessing. So, uh, we appreciate the public's patience with us as we learn that new system and figure out what we need to bone up on for. The knowledge base for the staff, so. That's all I pretty much have right now. Does anyone have any questions for me? That was amazing, that was a great article, yes. Yeah, I always go, ooh, I'm tied up on the topic, yeah. Yeah, it was, it was, I'm only really pleased, I'm hoping to maybe continue some programming with the master gardeners, because they're amazing. So, thank you very much.
How about words? Not looking good. Not, here we had the after hours. The E D A a couple of weeks ago, so that was good. At the same place. That was in the units, that was good. It sounded like it, we're gonna call it. It's kind of not stop, so no, Mitch said it was seem pretty handy in a time. And fire departments not here, they're gonna turn off the burner feed. I think it was a restaurant, so. You know, near here, it's a little different, and you know, in case you're running a little burns, it's like, good, that's good, so. Anything else?